Good evening, everyone. What we'll do is, after the proclamation, we'll give you guys, we'll take a brief break. So, because I know everyone doesn't want to be in the courtroom council chambers here. So, we'll take a brief rest and you guys could depart as you want. And then the Milltown Police Department will come back in, because they're outside waiting to come in. All right? All right. Good evening. I'd like to call the September 8th, 2025 Borough Council meeting order. Will the clerk please read the open public meeting statement?
Adequate notice has been provided as required under Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, specifying the time, date, and location of this meeting by posting a copy of the notice at the municipal building, on the municipal website, and providing a copy of the annual notice scheduled to the official newspapers of the borough. Notice is also on file in the municipal clerk's office.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Here.
Councilman Collins.
Here.
Councilman Manko.
Here.
Councilman Poznanski.
Here.
Councilwoman Payne.
Here.
Councilman Potter.
Here.
Mayor Murray.
Present.
Borough Attorney Bignolo.
Present.
Borough Engineer Mike McClellan.
Present.
Borough Administrator Fred Carr.
Yes.
And I am here as well.
Will everyone please stand for a moment of silence, which will be followed by the salute of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to your republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, can we have the girls softball team come up here, please?
Whereas, the 12U Milltown Royals softball team has brought great pride and honor to the borough of Milltown through their winning, their outstanding athletic achievement. And whereas, on July 13th, 2025, the Milltown Royals were crowned U.S.S.A. 12U C Eastern National Champions in Virginia after competing against top teams from across multiple states. And whereas, the Royals demonstrated exceptional skills, determination, and teamwork by finishing the tournament with an extraordinary record of 12 wins and only one loss out of 13 games. And whereas, the team has displayed offensive power where you not miss this run, finished with a team batting average of .462 accumulated, 102 RBIs, including an astonishing 49 RBIs with two outs in the inning, a testament of their resilience and never quit spirit. And whereas, their clutch performance under pressure earned them in filling nickname from their proud parents of two-out radfury queens. And whereas, individual excellence also shined through with USMA qualifiers, being named Tournament MVP and Abby McCabe earning the honor of Offensive Tournament MVP, further demonstrating their elite talent within this remarkable team. And whereas, this championship is reflection of not only the players' dedication and hard work, but also the gratitude of the guidance of their coaches and their unwilling support for their families and the entire Milltown community. Now, therefore, I, Mayor George Murray, along with the Borough Council of the borough of Milltown, do hereby honor the 2024-2025 12U Milltown Royals for their national championship that was won on July 13th, 2025.
You guys can all wait in the hall or come in. Will the clerk please read Resolution 2025-294 by title?
Resolution 2025-294, Promotion of Carmen Di Lorenzo to Captain of Police.
With pleasure, Council.
I make the motion this resolution be adopted.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilman Potter, seconded by Councilman Collins. Are there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Welcome.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Will the clerk please read Resolution 2025-295?
Promotion of William Farmer to Lieutenant of Police.
With pleasure, Council.
I move that this resolution be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion made by Councilwoman Payne, seconded by Councilman Potter. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read Resolution 2025-296 by title?
Promotion of Nicholas Oleschinsky to Sergeant of Police.
With pleasure, Council.
I move that this resolution be adopted.
Second.
A motion made by Councilwoman Payne, seconded by Councilman Potter. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Motion also carries, Mayor.
Will the clerk please read Resolution 2025-297 by title?
Promotion of Ryan Faff to Sergeant of Police.
With pleasure, Council.
Will the resolution be adopted?
Second.
A motion made by Councilman Collins, seconded by Councilwoman Payne. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Chief? Captain?
Learn from these mistakes nowadays.
Carmen, right hand up. Right hand up.
They screw me around.
I, Carmen Di Lorenzo.
I, Carmen Di Lorenzo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith of allegiance to the same. That I will...
That I will...
Bear true faith of allegiance.
True faith of allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the government.
And to the government.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
The duties of police captain.
The duties of police captain.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Oh, so help me God.
I, William Fama.
I, William Fama.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear.
That I will bear.
True faith allegiance.
True faith of allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
The duties of lieutenant.
The duties of lieutenant.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Ryan Faff.
I, Ryan Faff.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear.
That I will bear.
True faith allegiance.
True faith of allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And the governments established.
And the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will, uh, wait, and that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly.
Partially and justly.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of police sergeant.
Of police sergeant.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Nicholas Oleschinsky.
I, Nicholas Oleschinsky.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith of allegiance.
That I will bear true faith of allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the government established.
And to the government established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
The duties of police sergeant.
The duties of police sergeant.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
Let everyone in Milltown see who are...
Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Good to see y'all have the same board.
Congratulations. Thanks for coming. Good to see you.
What was the statement?
Yeah. I don't, I'm going.
Dave, I made sure I asked, so I didn't have to bother you.
We're on a TV timeout a second. We're not back. It's okay.
It's good practice. You get ad revenue. Do you have any listening music?
Are you serious? We have to wait for Councilman Collins to come back. We have to wait for Councilman Collins to come back. The meeting got a little long for him already. There's a lot going on. Does anybody know a song to make it soon? If we have to get a bigger building, just to have more national champions.
That's it.
You know, so be it. No, he's coming out.
Go ahead.
We have a presentation by the borough auditor.
It's fine. It should be on, it's light on, it's on.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for having us back. We're happy to be here tonight. I'm going to go over the audit. Um, we're from the accounting firm, O'Connor Davies. I'm partner of Rob Provost. This is the supervisor, Anthony Caprio. I was just going to keep it really brief, understanding your, um, crazy agenda today as well. I was going to go over some of the key financial highlights. Anthony's going to go over the audit opinion and the one audit comment that we had. Uh, mainly just wanted to be here to address any questions that you may have in the audit. So with that, I'll start with some of the financial highlights. You could all hear me, okay, right?
Yes.
So, I'm just going to go over basically the fund balances for your operating funds. I think that's the main component of the audit. So, fund balance in the current funds right now is at December 31st, 2024, 2.7 million. That's up from 1.1 million last year. However, you know, there's only a slight increase in revenues. The main piece of that increase to the 2.7 was inter-funds return of 1.2 million. State inter-funds loans last year returned this year. So that's just kind of one-time hit the fund balance with the transfer of funds coming back. So, other than that, I mean, your expenditures were fairly consistent from last year, which I think is really impressive, given all the, you know, risen costs and health benefits. I mean, just go right down the list with the rising costs all over the place. So I think the district, or I'm sorry, the borough did very well in that regard. So with that, I'm going to jump over to the water utility fund. So that fund balance was at 313,000, uh, from 245,000 last year. And please keep in mind, that's really only driven by lapsed appropriation reserves. So there's a two-year spending budget. At the end of the second year, whatever's not spent rolls back into fund balance. So, you know, that's really conservative spending on the appropriation reserves that was able to roll back into the water utility fund to kind of help that fund along, which has been struggling a little bit, obviously. So, that's where that's at. The electric funds has been really consistent from year to year. So basically, it was a standstill from last year, right at 1.2 million. That's pretty much what it was last year. So, you guys are doing really, really good with that fund. Um, so with that, I'm going to pass off to Anthony. He's going to go over the audit opinion and the one comment. And I'll circle back. Certainly, any questions they have will go over.
Good evening. For our report, we issued an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion you could get. Um, it was unmodified on the regular borough audit side as well as the state single audit side. This year, we had to test the NJDOT grant expenditures, and there were no appliance issues there. While performing our audit fieldwork, we did note three immaterial items during our cash disbursement testing that had some exceptions over the confirming of availability of funds. This is a common finding throughout many New Jersey municipalities, so this is not a one-time thing here. Otherwise, there were no issues related to payroll, tax, or the utility transactions noted at all during the year. And all that testing amounted to the one finding, as Rob mentioned in our audit report, where immaterial transactions were committed prior to the certification of availability of funds.
And just to add on to that comment for everyone in the room, too, certainly no financial statement impact at all. You know, it's really, especially this behind us, you, uh, they certified if the funds are available before the purchase is made. Sometimes outside departments, et cetera, a few sneak by. Um, but this is three out of, you know, large, large volume of activity. But again, certainly didn't affect the financial statements. Just wanted to add that. Yeah, with that, we'd like to address any, any questions that you guys may have.
So I just have one question. So, and it goes back to the corrective action. So you said this was based on three separate transactions? Did I get that correct?
There was three individual transactions that have been selected, yeah.
Out of how many that you tested?
Uh, this year was 25.
Okay.
Those specific.
Specific. You're always looking at dollar amounts? High dollar amounts as opposed to low dollar amounts?
No, so we do, a little bit. We, we test that separately, then we do a random statistical valid sample.
Okay.
And that's like either 25, 40, 60, based on risk.
Got it.
And we always come here thinking you guys are at lower risk, so we do 25. And then three out of 25, is that like 12% error rate?
Okay.
But yeah, these, and that's why I made sure in the report, it did say trivial, because it wasn't big dollars or anything like that.
Okay.
It's more of a, a process finding than a financial statement finding.
And, and what would be the process improvement that you would recommend?
Just so all purchase orders get approved before, which... Just so all purchase orders get approved before, which, again, it's hard sometimes, you know, with, a lot of entities are doing it electronically now with requisitions to expedite the process where, but, cost benefit too. I don't, you know, it's expensive. But it's always the outside departments kind of thing where it's, and sometimes you look at it too, is it an emergency? Or something like that, you know, because then it's obviously you're not gonna wait for funds to get approved, but. Yeah, but as Anthony was saying, this, this is very, very common, just with the large amount of activities, you know, amongst the state.
I appreciate, appreciate the confirmation and explanation.
Of course.
I got a question on page 24. This says, were $60,337, $60,337.64 deficit in the water utility? Page 24.
Yeah, and as I was saying earlier, if it wasn't for the lapsed appropriation reserves, the, the fund would have been in a small deficit. Now, there's always some kind of lapsed amount. Fortunately, this year was 300-plus thousand, which was really, in my opinion, helped the fund. Because yeah, without that, it would have, definitely would have been in a deficit situation.
What, what do you foresee for next year?
I mean, I guess I defer to Fred and Joe as, as that, but it's, and here too, you guys did a really, really good job controlling expenditures and obviously you don't want to keep raising rates. Uh, that's.
Yeah, we don't want to raise rates. I mean, but you know, we're at 60,000 deficit. Doesn't look so good for next year.
Yeah, and I think, and this year too, you had the last year of the R funds, it's 134,000, I believe that came in. So that, that also helped the fund out, which going forward, that, that's not there. So obviously, you're cutting costs where you can, easier said than done. Um, because, you know, you got that in this fund as well.
Hey, another question on page, uh, 182. This is about the deficits from taxes, the delinquent taxes.
I'm sorry, 182?
Yeah, 182. I'm sorry, delinquent taxes. It's like 7% in our budget every year.
Yes, that's, that's just the percentage of the, the tire levy, which I don't, I think. Yeah. But yeah, and it's, right, it is offset with the reserve. The 7%, I guess was the question, is that?
So you said 7% of the budget, yeah. I mean, shouldn't we be selling that?
We do.
We do?
But that, that takes place the year after.
Oh.
So the reserve fund collects the taxes, pays the bills this year, then we make up for it next year.
Next year.
Because as I've said before, uh, we get our money at the end of the day.
It looks like it's.
Pay now, I'll see you at tax. Pretty simple, bro. But I have to put, we have to put money into the budget for that reserve. And if you want to reduce that reserve, it requires considerable effort.
Is that standard one towns?
Oh, yes.
7%?
That's, yes, generally speaking. And that dollar amount obviously goes up the bigger your town.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I've seen a lot higher percentages than that.
That hurts. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing no further. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anytime. Thank you for having us.
Will the clerk please read Resolution 2025-290 by title?
Certifying Review of the Fiscal Year 2024 Municipal Audit.
What's the pleasure, counsel?
I move that this resolution be adopted.
Second.
I have motion made by Council President Zambrana, seconded by Councilman Potter. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Manko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Will the clerk please read Resolution 2025-291 by title?
Approving the Corrective Action Plan for the 2024 Municipal Audit.
What's the pleasure, counsel?
I move that this resolution be adopted.
Second.
I have a motion made by Council President Zambrana, seconded by Councilman Potter. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Manko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
You gentlemen might as well run out too, like everybody else.
All right, thank you again, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We'll see you next year.
Now is the time for public comment, limited to the resolutions on the agenda only. If you wish to speak, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Again, this is the public portion. Only under resolutions listed on the agenda at this time. There'll be a five-minute time limit as set forth by the rules at council. If someone raises their hand, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Debbie Miller, 92 Ford Avenue. I have a question on Resolution 2025-307. In one of the areas, it says that the mandate from the state of New Jersey, the uh, and New Jersey Impact Real rules, that there could be a potential decrease in flood insurance. Does that mean that our region, Milltown, will be more in a flood zone and homeowners will be required to have flood insurance?
You ready to meet up?
I guess we're all looking around. We don't know the answer to that one. You, the engineer.
Yeah.
So. Flood insurance is a tough question in the borough, in, not in the borough of Milltown, but in the state of New Jersey. It's a, um, the flood maps are set by FEMA and the Corps of Engineers, and, uh, this is a resolution where the borough is, uh, I would say politely on the microphone, objecting to the overreach of DEEP who's setting these extreme conditions for people to build in flood-prone areas. A lot of the beach communities down along the shore have banded against this overreach. Uh, and we got this from the, uh, from the Environmental Commission in support of that, because it's in their best, because they believe that we need to have some kind of regulatory control. I would say it's coming from a place like South River, not having flood insurance under the National Flood Insurance Program. If you're a flood zone area, is not prudent. Because your homeowner's insurance will not cover it if there's a 100-year flood and you're in the flood zone. It's just the way they are. If you have a mortgage and you don't have flood insurance and a National Flood Insurance Program, like I'm having a commercial, right, you won't, you may not get a mortgage. Uh, it's, so it's a tight, it's a tough question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. Michael Chikarjan, 19-year-old on L.A. Avenue, Chair of the Environmental Commission. Um, it's, I'd like to take this opportunity to say a couple of things about Resolution 2025-307. Uh, this is a, this is a resolution that's been endorsed by a number of the environmental organizations, or at least, at least at one time, it was. Some of them are complaining because it's become a little bit more lenient. Uh, but, um, those of us in the Environmental Commission believe that any movement forward is a good movement forward. Um, what it will do is, um, enhance flood protection standards. Um, and there are some flood elevation standards, and that was one of the areas in, in, in this rule that was weakened, actually. So it went from, you know, protecting, um, uh, buildings from a five-foot flood to protecting buildings from, uh, from a four-foot flood. Uh, so it's, it's become more lenient for, uh, for, uh, building owners. Uh, there's protection of inland wetlands, which is another, uh, part of the NJPAC REAL. Um, and sustainable land use planning with preservation of open spaces that are in danger of, of flooding. Um, and green infrastructure to try and inhibit flooding, just, just as the wetlands, um, play a role and, and would do. Um, and climate-informed decision-making, uh, using updated climate data and projections. And what the, what the rule would do is, would allow, it would require every five years for a reevaluation. So if things turn out not to be as, um, as severe as, as was initially considered, then, then those, those rules could be rolled back. And of course, if it looks like things are gonna be worse, then it would go the other way to protect buildings and people. Um, and, uh, so what the, um, Watershed Institute summarizes is that it would make things safer and more resilient for, uh, New Jersey. And, um, there were some concerns about some older buildings that may be needing retrofitting or adhering to new construction standards. And the NJDEP is addressing this through financial and technical assistance. Uh, there are a couple of other changes that were made, uh, to accommodate, uh, those especially along the shore areas and such. Uh, one concern was about affordable housing and, and whether there are areas that would be designated for affordable housing that would then be taken out of the housing stock because of the changes, um, by NJPAC REAL. And so by a more conservative estimate, um, there would be increased allowance for these affordable, um, housing units to be built. Although there would be some, uh, uh, green infrastructure that would be required. Um, and then with regard to, uh, projects, um, development projects, there is going to be a grace period for ongoing projects, and developers can submit their applications up to 180 days after the PACREAL rules are approved and still have their projects governed by prior rules. So I think that some of these changes, um, allow NJPAC REAL to be more lenient and address some of the concerns that a variety of parties have had. Um, so I, I hope you take those into account. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay, seeing no further comments, I'll close ordinance comments. We have ordinance introduction first reading. This is an introduction of ordinance 25-1572. There'll be no public input on this ordinance tonight. The introductory summary will be published as required by law, and in a second reading, public hearing and final adoption will be considered on September 29th, 2025. Full copies of this ordinance will be posted on our website, on the bulletin board of the municipal building, and available at no cost in the office of the municipal clerk between the hours of 8:30 a.m. and 4:30 p.m., Monday through Fridays. Will the clerk please read ordinance 25-1572 by title?
An ordinance to fix and amend salaries for Milltown Borough employees to include police captain.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion made by, by Councilman Collins. Is there any comments? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Manko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Ordinance introduction first reading. This is an introduction of ordinance 25-1573. There'll be no public input on this ordinance tonight. The introductory summary will be published as required by law, and a second reading, public hearing, final adoption will be considered on September 29th, 2025. Full copies of the ordinance will be posted on our website, on the bulletin board at the municipal building, and available at no cost in the office of the municipal clerk between the hours of 8:30 a.m., 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. Will the clerk please read ordinance 25-1573 by title?
An ordinance to amend the redevelopment plan entitled Ford Avenue Redevelopment Plan.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion made by Council President Zambrana, seconded by Councilman Potter. Is there any comments?
I, I have one. It's just a question. If this can be explained in layman's terms. I read, I read all, all through this. But if somebody can give me an explanation in a.
Paragraph?
A paragraph? Peter's good at that. Well, I. Lord knows I know how to talk. So, um, as, as the mayor and council are aware, um, the Ford Avenue Redevelopment Agency has, uh, proceeded with condemnation action. Uh, that action has resulted in an award of $26 million, uh, which has, uh, compelled the agency to revisit the Ford Avenue plan, um, in light of the fact that the acquisition cost is significantly greater than the agency and the redevelopers thought. So what this would allow for is, there's a concept plan attached to the amended plan, which shows that, um, in lieu of, I think the last plan had uh, under 300 units, um, this is going to allow for what was, um, prior to the last amendment, uh, 350 units of apartments, stacked townhomes and tack townhomes to be built on the site, uh, along with, um, the path along, um, Mill Pond, uh, which would be a public path and, uh, potentially some additional green space toward the rear of the project.
Okay, thank you.
You got it.
Does this have anything to do with the, uh, county's contribution to the Ford Avenue Committee?
This doesn't have anything to do with the county's contribution at this point. This, it, it acknowledges the fact that there may be open space associated with it, but it doesn't go down to that granular detail.
Okay, thanks.
You got it.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Manko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Ordinance introduction first reading. This is an introduction on ordinance 25-1574. There will be no public input on this ordinance tonight. The introduction summary will be published as required by law, and a second reading, public hearing and final adoption will be considered on September 29th, 2025. Full copies of this ordinance will be posted on our website, on the bulletin board of the municipal building, and available at no cost in the office of the municipal clerk between the hours of 8:30 a.m. and 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. Will the clerk please read ordinance 25-1574 by title?
Ordinance to amend Chapter 6 Alcoholic Beverage Control, Section 6-3 Licenses, Subsection 6-3.4 entitled Classes and Maximum Number of Licenses, License Fees, and Chapter 15 Building and Housing, Section 2, Administrative Fees for All Subcodes, Subsection 15-2.1, entitled Certificates of Occupancy and Approval. And Chapter 25, Section 4 Water Rates and Meter Charges, Subsection 25-4.2, entitled Tap Fees and Meter Charges of the Revised General Ordinances of the Borough of Milltown.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
I got a question. Discussion, I'm sorry.
You have to.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilman Potter, seconded by Councilwoman Payne. Is there any comments, Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry I interrupted you.
Oh, good.
Uh, I was just wondering about these increase in liquor license fees. Are these required by the state, or are they just, uh, or what we plan on doing?
The liquor license fees here in Milltown are about one-third of what is allowable to be charged. Um, we are allowed to, to increase them by 20% or $500, whichever is the lesser of the two, each year. Um, this will equate to a $180 annual increase for the license holders, um, for the regular licenses and a $25 increase for the club licenses.
As I see. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Manko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Authorizing payments of municipal obligations. Next on the agenda, we have authorizing payments of municipal obligations. Will the clerk please read Resolution 2025-292 by title?
Authorizing the payment of bills, claims, and statements against the Borough of Milltown in the total amount of $1,8,134.52.
You have heard the reading of this resolution. Is there any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I had a question, I think Phil covered it. Uh, page seven, King Kong?
King Kong?
Yeah.
Printer. King Kong printer.
It's a King Kong, uh, that's the name of the company.
Yes, King Kong printing, yes.
Oh, okay. Do you know what that was for? Just recycle, sandwich, board, and insert?
Advertisements.
Oh, okay. All right, thanks. I just had a comment that, uh, I just had a comment that in some of the bills, we had for the, our water department, we had a $13,000 bill for, in 625 for a hydrant, sewer maintenance is $29,335, and chlorine was $4,000, so that's all adding to the sewer budget, I mean, the water and sewer budget.
So the fire hydrants are for the three, for three replacement hydrants?
Three replacements?
Yeah, 13K is about right for three hydrants.
Yeah.
Remember, Councilman, that the hydrant is not just the little red piece that you see above the ground. A lot of times it goes 10, 12 feet below to the actual water main.
And it's, comes out of the water and sewer budget, right?
Yeah, if you look, yes, if you look at the sewer bill, if you look actually in the bills list, you'll see fees charged by Middlesex County for when we dig up a water main, or we dig up a hole, that dirt that comes out of the hole, we have to, we have to pay to dispose of that dirt when we get rid of it.
That's why our sewer, our water and sewer bills are so high.
Well, it's just math.
Combination of things.
It's all lots of stuff, yes, sir.
Thank you.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilman Potter, second by Council President Zambrana. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Menko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
A consent resolution has been prepared for the resolutions listed on the agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and haven't been reviewed by Borough Council will be enacted on in one motion. Any items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated on as a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of funds. If any member of council wants any resolution acted upon individually, please give me the resolution number, and it will be pulled from the resolution.
Resolution 2025-306 and 2025-307.
Is that it? Will the clerk please read resolutions on the agenda minus 306, 307, 294, minus 297 that we took out in the beginning? Thank you.
Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meetings upon certain conditions. And whereas each of the following resolutions presented before the council at its September 8th, 2025 regular meeting appear to have the unanimous approval of all members of the Borough Council. Resolutions 2025 through, 298 through 2025, 305, now therefore be it resolved by the Borough Council, the Borough of Milltown, that each of the above listed resolutions be approved and adopted by the Borough Council with the same legal effect as though they each was read into, in its entirety at the September 8th, 2025 regular meeting and adopted by separate vote.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Potter, second by Council President Zambrana. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Menko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read Resolution 2025-306 by title?
Amending Contract with Onsite Partners LLC for Milltown Battery Storage Project.
Where is the pleasure of council, please?
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilman Collins, second by Councilman Potter. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like clarification on this. I've read this, but if I can, I'd just like clarification on the, on the contract here. Sure. So Councilman Posnansky, essentially what happened was you authorized this contract with Onsite Partners for the battery storage project. There were a number of different exhibits to the agreement, one of which was a schematic that showed us what they were going to source to build out the site. After that was signed by the mayor and Onsite Partners representatives, they decided that they could come up with another way to supply the power with different equipment. So essentially, it's just identifying that that exhibit's going to change to reflect different equipment than what they originally told us they were going to give us. And frankly, I don't think any of us really have a whole lot of concern over which equipment they use, as long as they're going to give us the, you know, the savings and the offset that they identify in the RFP. I don't have a problem with it. I just wanted clarification. So I want to know? No, no, certainly, we're just having a discussion, I'm explaining. Okay? Thank you. You got it.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Menko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Nope, one more, one more.
Oh, great, I'm sorry. Councilman Collins, I apologize.
It's all good.
It's been a long day.
Will the clerk, will the clerk please read Resolution 2025-307 by title?
Resolution in support of the New Jersey protection against climate threats, resilient environments and landscapes rule, NJPAC real.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilman Potter, second by Councilman Collins. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
I have some questions. Is this settled science? Whoever wants to answer up here.
So, I mean, what kind of science, sir?
Is this settled? S-E-T-T-L-E-B, settled science?
Oh, settled science?
Because there's, there's, there's two sides, but there's only one side represented here. I understand science, and I'm environmentally friendly. You can answer if you'd like to.
So this is a projection, okay, of climate change and their opinion. I can anecdotally tell you that if you're a homeowner, 12 years ago, 13 years ago, after Superstorm Sandy, when the base flood elevation in the floodplain of South River overnight, let me finish, your insurance rate, based on the base flood elevation produced by the FEMA flood maps, went from eight feet to 14 feet. That means that when you went to work today, your house was in the good-to-go. Tomorrow, when you woke up and went to work, your house was now five feet, for insurance purposes, underneath that base flood elevation. So you accepted five feet of flood risk overnight. And you didn't do a thing. You didn't move your house, you just woke up and went to work. Since then, there's been a lot of work trying to find the happy median between the science of flood control, how to mitigate it, whether or not the wetlands or these repairing barriers will actually do any good or not, in a, in an event like a hurricane or Superstorm Sandy. Superstorm Sandy wasn't Sandy, was not a hurricane. It was just a big old flood. And all those people who, you know, when, when, when the water floods over the barrier islands and breaches the barrier islands, like down on Lavalette, no amount of repairing barriers or, or wetlands and all these kind of things that we're talking about, trying to fix the flood areas, is going to help. But what we can try to do in the meantime is mitigate those day-to-day events, those day-to-day when it floods all the time. You've been in places, Councilman, where regardless of the day, you can stand outside, it's a beautiful sunny day, and water has come through the manholes flooding the street just because it's a high tide. Monmouth Beach, good example. You're standing in ankle-deep water, it's a beautiful day, and it's just high tide in Monmouth Beach, water everywhere. And we're trying to mitigate that on a day-to-day basis, and the science is not exact. This is just an opinion of how we can try to fix the problem moving forward.
Well, the science is not exact, but it's definitely geared one, one way here. And I know there are aberrations as far as in the shore zones, but, but this is seen to me here as settled science and is not, I've had science classes in high school, at college. Am I a climate denier? Yeah, maybe I am. Because it used to be called global warring, it used to be called global cooling also, now it's just global change. So there's, there's, there's different sides here, but it, I see urgency in this. What do you, what is the urgency here? There's urgency here, I see, I see it here.
No, it's just that we need to do something, and this is a recommendation from the Environmental Commission, it's to the council. Okay? I don't, you know, I, I just, my, my experience is anecdotal, okay, from managing a community post Sandy and seeing the impact. That's it.
Well, I represent, like others here, I represent around 7,000 people here.
Correct, sir.
And, and how many people are looking for whatever possible change here? Because the changes could also be financially burdening on us, isn't that correct?
They're absolutely burning. You know, you're accepting risk. The homeowner is accepting the risk of when they build in places that are fraud-prone. This is an opportunity to talk about how can we fix that. I mean, we have, we can all go outside and see the pictures where the, where the flooded public works yard. You see the helicopter across the street, American Legion underwater.
Well, it happens here, and it also happens because New Brunswick does not lower the water levels, which they have the ability to, I know the DEP does not let them.
Yes, sir. Just remember, just for my editorial comment, Mike said this before, remember, DEP is built on a floodplain, and every time the Trenton River floods, they can't get into their parking lot. Keep that in the back of your mind. That has nothing to do with this conversation, it's just, that's why they throw me out of the building.
What happens if we do not comply? If, if we do, if we do go along with this and we do not comply, what happens? There's, there would be punishment, no doubt.
This is not, we're not buying into any program, we're just letting support to a, to an idea.
What are we doing? What are we, what are we actually doing? We're going, if we pass a resolution, what are we doing?
We're supporting the idea, sir.
But doing what? How do we, how do we support that?
I think we're, I think you're looking to grasp something that doesn't exist, but I know it's going to happen by 2021 in the state of New Jersey. If I did, I would have won the lottery last night.
Well, I'm saying, if, if we're going to vote to make this resolution happen, what happens with that? Once it passes, what happens?
All this does is it says that we think this is a good idea.
So we're just saying yes or no, and that's it?
It's, it's, you know, some people say it's feel-good legislation, okay? It says in here, and, you know, the DEP is going to keep working it and try to come up with a better plan. We're not going to solve the problem here in Milltown, but we're saying from an environmental perspective that, you know, we could try to look at it and try to fix it. Does that mean that we can fix Brunswick when they don't open the dam? I can't answer that question.
But you got to remember, we have flooding in Milltown, and anything we could do to help the people, maybe, maybe it's just, you know, superficial, but it's better than, you know, trying not to, you know, if enough politicians get behind it, maybe they'll, you know, try to do something about the flooding we have.
Or anywhere, yes, sir.
Anyway, even South River, you know, what you say.
So geographically, we're not doing anything. I'm just trying to find out what, like you said, we're not doing anything. Would there be anything expected geographically to help alleviate the flooding?
In Milltown?
Yes.
This is a statewide issue, sir. This is a statewide problem. I mean, if Mill, if North Brunswick, as you said, floods and they don't let the dam, it impacts us.
Okay.
But it did affect us because we had to load our municipal building.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Menko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have reports and comments from elected officials. Council President Zambrana?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have two short, two short reports tonight. First is from the HRC Committee. To remind everyone that September 2025 is both National Suicide Prevention Month and World Alzheimer's Month, two things which I've experienced through family and friends over the last year, so keep those items in mind. Our next council meeting won't be until the 29th, because on the 22nd, which would have been our next council meeting, is the beginning of Rosh Hashanah. It's Rosh Hashanah Eve, which is basically the beginning of the New Jewish Year. And then Wednesday, October 1st, is the beginning of Yom Kippur, which is the Day of Atonement. And my last report is from the Milltown Revitalization Committee. Milltown Day is upon us. September 27th, from 10 a.m. to 3 p.m., Milltown Day will happen at Gloria Bradford Park, Rainer Schein. And at this point, all registration options are closed, and we hope that everyone joins us for a wonderful sunny day. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a intervention, a Northeast Supply Enhancement Project from the New Jersey DEP has been extended, its website is, you know, access, backslash, A-Aktion-NJ-LCV.org, backslash A-N-E-S-E dash New Jersey Independent Comments, where you can comment on the virtual hearing on the 10th. And I think it's, what does it say? It's being extended to the 24th, and that, the link is HDEPNJ.gov backslash N-E-S-E. Milltown Day will be September 27th, 10 to 4. We were looking for, do a natural resource inventory in town from the Environmental Commission. And Councilman Posnansky, we'd like to ask Ralph about having a tour, tour for the Schwederman Cabin, if it can be done. And let's see what we have. No, no, that was it. I missed the Folk Festival on the 23rd, was at Davidson Milk Park, sorry about that. My next report is the Library Board, the schedule. Drop-in play Tuesday, September 9th at 10 a.m. Library Board meeting Tuesday, September 9th at 6:30 p.m., open to the public. Movie matinee, Good Will Hunting, Wednesday, September 10th at 2:30 p.m., after-school, Craft Corner, Thursday, September 11th at 3 p.m. Mosaic, Monday, Kids Help Create a Poster Puzzle, Monday, September 15th and 22nd at 4 p.m. After-school game at Tuesday, September 16th at 3 p.m. Tween Craft, Kids Make a Locker Magnet, Thursday, September 18th at 3 p.m. Crochet for Beginners, September 20th at 11 a.m. Rita Pooch, Saturday, September 20th at 12:30 p.m. Adult Yoga, Monday, September 22nd at 9:15 p.m. Registration required. Juridalizing for Mindfulness, Monday, September 22nd at 5:30 p.m. September is National Library Card Sign-Up Month. Any Milltown resident that doesn't have a library card would like to get one, can stop by the library with a valid driver's license or Milltown Utility Bill, with their name showing the address, we would be more than happy to give them one. If you live in another town, please visit a library, that library for a card. September National, those, September is National Library Card Month, sign-up month, you can get a library card at any time. And I'd just like to say, Council, former councilman and American Legion Commander Ron Dixon said, don't forget the September 11th memorial service will be, I believe, 6 p.m. on September 11th?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven p.m.
Seven p.m., seven p.m., okay. He told me six, I'm sorry.
He'll be there.
That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Menko?
Yes. Regarding the Milltown Electric Department, a large tree limb was removed from a primary wire on the side of the senior center, a fallen tree on Applewood Court. I'm going to just kind of condense some of these. If you hadn't noticed, we had some good storms, and a lot of things fell. With that, Janic Court, Applewood, a lot of, a couple places lost power, and our electric department moved as swiftly as they can to safely replace blown transformers and restore power. Several streetlights that were broken were replaced with energy-efficient LEDs, about five locations for that. Numerous calls for downed wires. Temporary service is connected to new storage facility on Ryder's Lane. There's some rereads done, replaced failed utility meters. Line clearance was performed in several locations to add resiliency to our system as tree interference is a cause of a lot of major outages. Three utility poles removed to facilitate infrastructure expansion. Beyond that, the water department is also continuing to move forward with their meters. There are still some left. I know we're trying to move forward and clean those up. There are lists that get passed around almost weekly, I believe. And if any of the councilmen, I just ask this as a, just a thought. If you see any, if you look through the list and you see anybody you know, just send them a text and kind of go like, hey, come on. And I think, you know, maybe, maybe that's something that as a team effort, we could all, the list is narrowing down. Everybody making 10 phone calls at some point might be, might be an effective tool to make sure that, that we get this done before people have to get shut offs. Beyond that, I will say that, as John had noticed earlier in the billing, I did notice a lot of the fire hydrants being replaced in town. And that's a good thing. And we used to pay a lot to have that done by a third party. And that's just, that was an investment the town made before my time in this. To bring in some good people and give them the right tools to be able to help basically buy down our outlay. And as the gentlemen who were doing the, you know, our intake review, whatever you want to call it, as they noticed, our costs stayed relatively low in growth from last year, which is an accomplishment in this economy where, where, you know, lunch is 20 bucks every moment, every day. So I just think we're, it is hard to look at our water and kind of go, we're doing a good job. But it actually is, is doing well for what it was. And we're hoping to continue improvements. The improvements to machinery that we're getting for our DPW doesn't exactly affect the water or it doesn't affect our electric, but it does in our ability to respond and maintain our town. So that's for my reports. I know as we've kind of merged our comments in here, did want to say a few things is that coming up, we do have, so this year, our eighth grade class is, which does the haunted, the haunted river walk. They also have a couple of other things that they do to raise money for their trip. They're one of the smallest classes we've had in quite a while. Which is, was exemplified in one of the meetings I had where haunted river walk teams are going to be, usually it's 10 teams and usually it's 10 teams of 10 or 11 or 12 kids. It's seven this year because the kids need to raise money and they need to have 10 skids. So Milltown is always awesome about stepping up and helping. But this year, if you go there and, you know, buy a ticket if you're not going. Maybe buy some candy. Maybe buy some candy, give it to some kids who are there, you know, do something. But if you can show up, that'd be really good. The variety show is also a big revenue enhancement for them. And, well, I just want to say something for that. The Royals did a great job. I'm glad we had a proclamation for them and recognized them. And there was also the naming of the Memorial Garden, which happened over by Gloria Bradford Park. And the garden came along really nicely this year. And I think it made a big difference to that family and allowed to the kids who actively touched earth in putting plants in. And I think that will stay with them, that they did something for their friend. That same group that did it, Project Purple or the Purple Project, they, I saw it on Milltown for all. But it's a worthy endeavor and they are looking for bold donations and fertilizer, topsoil, anything you got lying around that you might want to get rid of, that they can use to expand that little area. And what the real goal was for them was that to have lasting improvement that sticks around for a few years. Maybe becomes a model for anybody looking to do a Silver Project or an Eagle Scout or just be helpful. So there's plenty of places and people that'll obviously help in this town. Thank you. That was enough time for me.
Thank you. Councilwoman Payne?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a short report from the Police Department. Between August 1st, 2025 and August 31st, 2025, police responded to 1,476 calls for service. During this period, the police conducted 113 radar details in numerous locations. Police made 671 motor vehicle stops during this period. And the police investigated 12 motor vehicle accidents. 23 arrests were made for various things, including shoplifting, DWI, active warrants, criminal mischief. Just a reminder that you can receive emergency messages only. Text the word MILLTOWN to 38276. The police non-emergency line is 732-828-1100. And in case of emergencies, always dial 911. And remember that the police urge you not to rely on social media as a lot of information that is shared there can be incorrect or misleading. So for accurate and reliable information, please contact the Police Department directly. And just a quick comment. Once again, congratulations to Milltown's finest on our newly promoted police officers. This was a result of a major restructure in the department. And so I first want to thank my colleagues on the council for approving that plan. And the Chief, Chief Johnson did a fantastic job of making sure that there's a succession plan in place. And, and again, was very qualifying and superb candidates that have these new roles. So just a special shout out to our, to our police folks on a job well done. And that's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Posnansky?
Sure. I have a report for the Senior Center. I do not have one for the DPW had a computer problem, so I'm going to read the report for the Senior Center. September trips. Wednesday, September 10th, bus trip to Monmouth Kitchen. The bus will leave at 11:45. Tuesday, September 16th, bus trip to Ross and Trader Joe's. The bus will leave at 9:30. Wednesday, September 17th, bus trip to the Barge Restaurant. The bus will leave at 11:00 a.m. Tuesday, September 23rd, bus to Vic's Restaurant in Bradley Beach. The bus will leave at 11:00 a.m. Wednesday, September 24th, bus trip to Cracker Barrel. The bus will leave 10:45 a.m. Monday, September 29th, bus trip to Party Fair in Burlington. The bus leaves at 9:30. And lastly, Tuesday, September 30th, the bus trip to the Shrimp Box. The bus will leave at 10:45. And the VNA nurse will be available for appointments on Monday, September 15th, from 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. The service is available for Milltown seniors free of charge each month. Please sign up in the bulletin board if you are interested. In the lunch program, we have a weekly lunch program on Wednesdays, sponsored by a lot of just promises, promise. On Wednesdays, 12:30 p.m. Please check the calendar for dates. Animal shelter donations, there is such a need for the shelters that we will continue collecting throughout the year. This includes unopened dog and cat food, litter and unused toys and accessories. And I have something I'd like to read also in case I don't get the chance later. It's, this coming Thursday, September 11th marks the 24th anniversary of the horrific attacks on our country by terrorists bent on destroying America and our way of life. We united and came together as a country. Though the original pain has faded, a majority of Americans still have the resolve and love for our shared history. God bless America. God bless each one of us. And as for our flag, forever may it wave. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Potter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From the Milltown Recreation Department. Milltown Borough Pool enjoyed an amazing summer season, concluding with an excellent turnout at our annual Labor Day festivities. The pups in the pool event was a great success. We sincerely thank all residents, our dedicated pool staff, and Lisa Dantcheck, along with her wonderful family, who generously provided a wide variety of delicious treats throughout the summer in the snack shack. Don't miss out on a fun evening under the lights at the Rutgers football game on Friday, September 19th. Please contact the Recreation Department for additional information and ticket purchase details. Youth soccer registration will close on Wednesday, September 10th. With the season scheduled to begin on Saturday, September 20th. We are still in need of volunteer coaches and are offering an incentive of each volunteer's coach's child's registration. We're offering back-to-school basketball clinics with our very own Sandy Molinowski. Clinics for fifth and sixth grade boys and girls will be held at Joyce Kilmer School this week. And K through three third-grade clinics will be at Parkview School next week. Spots are limited. Please register now to secure your place. The multi-sports registration deadline is Wednesday, September 10th. With the season starting on Sunday, September 14th. The tennis start date has been pushed back to Friday, September 19th. And registration is open Monday, September 15th. Unfortunately, due to low enrollment, flag football has been canceled for the fall season. Youth chess classes are scheduled to begin on Thursday, September 18th. The registration deadline is Monday, September 15th. The registration deadline for the Decadent Musical Theater Program is Friday, September 12th. Classes will begin on Tuesday, September 16th at the Senior Center. Adult yoga, Pilates and men's basketball are currently full for the fall season. Registration for the winter season will start in November. The registration deadline for the Adult Coed Softball League is Tuesday, September 9th. The fall season is scheduled to begin on Tuesday, September 16th. Fall registration for women's volleyball is still open. The season is scheduled to begin on Thursday, September 18th. And as mentioned before, the annual 9/11 candlelight remembrance service will be held this Thursday at 7:00 p.m. at the American Legion Pavilion. We look forward to seeing everyone at Milltown Day on Saturday, September 27th. And please be sure to visit our recreation webpage to familiarize yourself with upcoming programs and help us continue to make Milltown Recreation a community in motion. From the Milltown Planning Board, the meeting in September was canceled and the next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October 1st. Finally, I would like to extend my congratulations to the Milltown Royals softball team on their national championship, as well as to our police officers on their well-deserved promotions. And Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. I just have a brief one for the Schwinnemann Homestead Committee. I just got word back from our DPW director and code enforcement, not code enforcement, I'm sorry. Building, building, uh, construction official. Thank you. Brain fart. Thursday, the 18th, we just got to figure out the time. That's when we'll be meeting at the, for the site inspection of, for the committee. That's the end of my report. Reports from Borough Professionals. Attorney Peter Vignola?
Sure, just one item, Mr. Mayor. I had emailed the mayor and council. I received correspondence on behalf of the owner of the Acme site and two of the other properties that make up that redevelopment area. As some of you may or may not know, there is a pilot for three of the properties over in that vicinity, encompassing the, the Acme site, the portion of the strip mall that's attached to Target but isn't Target, and then the smaller strip mall that has the Cold Stone Creamery in it. Those are all separate lots. But when the pilot agreement was created, there was a singular payment in lieu of taxes for all three properties. As you all know, the owner of that property has obtained an approval to utilize the Acme site and create a residential development there. If that were pursued, they would no longer be entitled to the payment in lieu of taxes because that was based upon a commercial use. So what they have requested is an allocation of the pilot payment among the three parcels. We are still looking into that request and the requested allocation. But I wanted you to be aware that at some time in the future, I'll probably come back to you with some more information and be making a request to the council probably for that allocation to occur because it would make sense for each individual parcel to have its own allocation so that if one of them were used in a non-commercial manner, the other two parcels could still have that benefit that was created probably about 23 or 24, actually 25 years ago now. So that's all I have.
Excellent.
Thanks.
Borough Engineer, Mr. McFlone?
Just a short report, Mr. Mayor, is to update you on the schedule of the process of the replacement of meter project. Right now, you're about 90% complete. There's about 200 still that are unscheduled. We appreciate Councilman Manko's comments. With any assistance, the Borough Mayor and Council can help to try and get the remaining 200 cleaned up would be helpful. The contractors still have some work, but he's starting to run out. So we need really the support of the folks and the residents to try and get these things scheduled. There has been a lot of efforts to try and clean these up. It's slightly less than 10% of the remaining homes. We'll continue to try and we appreciate any help you can give us too. Okay?
Thank you.
That's all we have.
Thank you. Business Administrator, Mr. Carr?
I have nothing, sir, no.
Okay.
Mike, how many homes?
About 200.
Yeah, so, let me go back. So yes, I do have something to say. And so for two months, we've been saying, call your friends, call your neighbors, text a dog. Nothing's happening. This is where I get to be the bad guy and say, council, we don't want to shut off the water for non-compliance, but without the threat, the carrot means nothing. And so endeth my speech.
Borough Clerk?
I have nothing, ma'am.
Okay. Does any member of council have any old business to bring before council?
I do. I have three items. I'm going to start with this. It's timely because we have the energy storage systems coming. It's solar array fields and roof panels. I'll discuss optional yet feasible electrical savings upgrades. We have an electrical storage system coming to Milltown, but why stop there? When discussing the storage system was an alternative plan such as, such as solar, why wasn't solar discussed? Or was solar discussed when this could be for Mr. Carr? We're bringing the storage system, but was solar discussed? Solar panels, solar fields? Because it's, it's an option.
So the purpose, we've discussed panels, okay, that we have in the town. People have solar panels. But for the purposes of shaving the peak load, solar panels will not do it. That's why we have the battery.
Okay, I'll just, I'm going to continue.
Yeah, so a conversation, but you know, if we have solar panels, where are you going to put a municipal solar array in Milltown? So we don't really have that space. And so the batteries were brought to, like I said, to shave the peak load to reduce our costs.
Okay. Well, we don't get as much sun here as they do in Arizona, so it's, it's, it's an issue. But I wanted to bring that up. But I'm still going to continue with this. The solar array fields, such as the one used in South Brunswick, could be certainly adaptable as an add-on. With New Jersey's mandate to quickly go green, dismissing coal and nuclear fire plants and abandoning natural gas, which account for more than half of our electrical needs, we have to find alternatives. Solar fields, also known as solar farms, are photovoltaic. Power stations are large installations that convert sunlight into electricity to feed the grid. They could also include tracking devices that follow the sun for higher energy output. The tracking mechanisms rotate the panels throughout the day, following the sun's path, increasing the sun's yield. Now, going into solar roof panels. The solar roof panels in Milltown could be used on municipal buildings, such as the Firehouse, the DPW, Borough Hall, schools, et cetera. There are options for financing, including third-party ownership, agreements, bonds, or federal grants, easing upfront costs. There are many benefits to this plan, including reduced operating costs. By generating our own electricity, Milltown could significantly reduce or eliminate utility bills. Rural utility bills, bills. Enhanced resiliency. Adding battery storage to a solar system can provide backup during grid outages. Federal and state grants. The Department of Energy offers grants for renewable energy projects. Local and state grants also exist. I'm offering options here. I also believe with the ever-rising cost of energy like water, every, every available viable option of driving electricity should be considered. We on council need to always consider our neighbors' well-being. That is why we were elected. Residents put their trust in us, we need to earn their trust every day. Okay. I'm going to talk about taxes. I'm going to speak about the borough taxes tonight. As our taxes rise every year affecting all of us, struggling families, seniors, and everyone in between. There's been one constant, the old mission league property and roughly $7 million owed to us. Yes, you, the taxpayer, you've been paying their taxes. I hope you open your eyes and your mind here. At roughly $15,000 per home, $7 million is an equivalent of almost 500 homes reneging on their taxes. We have other homeowners owing substantial taxes. However, this is above and beyond. I'm concerned that with this dereliction and disregard of our struggling borough is forced residents to flee to more reasonable living environments. Some are very concerned that developers selected to renovate and rehabilitate the Ford Avenue site be able to prosper. I'm more concerned that the taxpayers of Milltown be relieved of the burden of subsidizing this war-torn site. The beauty and joy of our borough needs to desperately be restored. And I have one more thing to discuss. And this goes into what I spoke the last time that I was here. What I bring up here tonight, it's reestablishing the original agenda template. Resolution 2025-22 was on the consent agenda, January 6th, 2025. Council voted unanimously to adopt this into law, thus becoming binding. This resolution included the Order of Business or Agenda Template. From line one, call the meeting order. From line one, call the meeting order, call meeting to order, to line twenty, adjournment, each line is specified. My concern is line sixteen, council comments, which follows public comment. After council comments appears mayor's comments. What I have cited derives from Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised, revised, in brief, page sixteen. And the reason for laws to be concise is justice, and justice needs to be served tonight. Council has their First Amendment right to speak, especially during council comments. We have a voice to use as we see fit to inform our constituents and to answer to residents who speak out during public comments. We were elected not higher, we are at the top in the tier system, our rights will not be tinkered with, no one revises or modifies our laws without our consent. Would anyone like to discuss this?
Yes, I would, I'd agree wholeheartedly, that's why we have had this in the past. I don't know how this got changed, but nobody will take blame for this, but it should be so we can address the audience, you know, comments. That was the purpose of this meeting.
Well, the agenda has changed, and the mayor said at that last meeting that I was at that we voted for this, but we did not vote for the change, we voted for the original, and it's binding. And the only one, if Councilman Collins knows, the only one that can change that is the majority of council.
That's right.
And it's important to be able to use your voice also, because when the audience participates, we would follow that, and now we do not follow that, so someone can say whatever they need to say, and we have nothing.
Yeah, I think we should return to the old format.
Well, it's by law.
Right.
The law is old format, we did not vote for a change.
So why aren't we doing that? Silence.
What is the purpose for the change? Mr. Carr, what was the purpose for the change? Because you said you enacted that.
Give me a second. The purpose of the change, sir, was to perhaps decrease the time in the meeting.
Decrease what?
To decrease the meeting time. Instead of having council reports followed by council comments, you have an opportunity during your report to make your comments, all in one fail swoop. Instead of having the council reports, then we have like a-- then we have a break, and then we have council comments. You have a opportunity to speak, we have not decreased or denied you the opportunity to speak. The intent was to speed up the process as we-- that was it. There's no suppression of the council.
Now, I came on board last January, and our past clerk would be here till ten-thirty, eleven o'clock, our meetings lasted very long. Why the change now?
Maybe we should be better than being here late, that's the only intent. Look, to me, this is simple, there are seven people on the dais, you guys can do what you want, I'm along for the ride. If the ride is shorter, I'm all for it.
Well, you're changing the ride, but--
That's right.
But let me ask you though, who are you to change the order in the agenda?
We just--
Councilman--
Councilman, yeah, we just, we had a conversation, you know, telling the council president and I to try to shorten the meetings. If you guys want to go to have a longer meeting, God bless you, it's okay, I get paid the same, I personally don't care. If the council wants to vote tonight to go back to the old format and stay here till ten-thirty, great, it's all for you guys, so give me a vote.
The old format, that hurts who? Because the new format, the new format by design, when you put the comments with the reports, because someone does follow me, it's gonna make me feel guilty if I go long, like I just did tonight, or what proceeded as I did tonight.
Councilman, like I said, I have no skin in this game.
But January sixth, what did we vote for? Does that count as law or no, in your opinion? I remember last time you said it was a guideline.
It is.
Is the Constitution a guideline?
So we're not talking about the Constitution.
No, no, but I'm asking you a question, because there's two separate laws here.
I'm not a constitutional lawyer, I'm saying, as I said five minutes ago, whatever the council wants to do. So lean into the microphone, make a motion, Councilman, it says, "I want to go back to the old way, give me the vote, we'll drive the train off the cliff."
A motion isn't needed to go back.
Again, sir.
Because it was changed illegally.
There's no--
It was changed illegally, am I wrong in that?
Again, sir.
No, I'm asking your opinion, because you--
My opinion is you should make up your mind and decide what you want to do, we can move on with the meeting. That's what I'm saying.
Well, you can keep lecturing me.
I can, absolutely, but you're lecturing me.
No, I'm asking you. Councilman, would you like to make a resolution? It doesn't need a resolution, it shouldn't need a resolution.
Make a motion, make a motion.
I'll make a motion when you return the old way.
There's a motion, right there, there's a motion, you get a second.
We have a motion.
And a second.
Have a second, please.
Second.
Call the roll. Sorry, sir.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Sorry, we three minutes are not even--
Council President Dan Brana.
No.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
You can discuss if you want.
Well, actually, no, we're past discussing, we're due the vote. I just, I had my comments, and we all get our comments, so I don't see the difference. Location, semantics. I'll go with an aye.
I beg your pardon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne? Councilman Posnansky? Councilman Potter?
No.
Mayor, there is a tie.
So, Councilman Manko, do you, just for clarification, so you understand, you voting aye means you're gonna--
I have comments at the end instead of in the middle.
Correct, okay. Yeah, that's fine, because I vote aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Can I ask a question? What exactly--
No, it's over.
You're--
It's over.
I have a clarifying question on your motion. You made a-- sir, you made a motion, but I'm not clear on your motion. So I can put it in the minutes, I am asking you to clarify what your motion is.
Our motion is to return council comments to after the public comments in the--
Okay.
On the agenda here. Maybe we should get a court reporter?
I don't think we need a court reporter. I dare say that. I think your clerk asking a question as to clarification of what's just transpired for the minutes is different from her perhaps having a comment that she'd like to make on the record on behalf of her office, so--
It was never fully indicated.
So, I mean--
Sorry.
I think you should endorse your clerk asking you for clarification on something.
Yeah.
All right, I have a few things for old business. I wanted to ask the council president, back in February, I requested to put on the agenda a resolution to create a Firehouse Subcommittee. And I just would like to see an update if we could get this added on the agenda, because I've been getting requests from residents about how come we're not moving on the Firehouse, even though it's listed in the South Main Street Rehabilitation Plan, but that's been on the, it's been in a couple of years now, and there's been no movement, so the residents are requesting if we can--
How many residents are we talking about?
Residents in Milltown.
How many residents?
Doesn't matter.
Sure, it's five or it's a hundred?
I would like to know why you still can't put it on the--
We'll take it under discussion for the next agenda.
I would also like to request to see if, so this request came in on April fifteenth by the police chief to have the Boy Scout Troop Thirty-Three renovate the front of the, or the renovating the police entrance that I requested on April fourth. I would just like to see if we could get an update and add that to the agenda.
So my understanding was that the police chief did not request that, yes, yes.
That's his signature right there.
Yes, he signed it, he signed it, but that is not anything that he has any--
That's absolutely right. The chief did not request it.
Chief did not request that, so--
Dear Chief Johnson, thank you for reaching out to Troop Thirty-Three Boy Scouts as discussed in the service project within the scouts and the leaders. The scouts are looking forward to the opportunity to serve, contribute, and give back to the community. The service project at the side entrance of the Police Department would be a wonderful experience for them all. The project parameters would be dig down, install layers of modified bluestone, and then install two to three courses of retaining wall with caps. The area would be kidney-shaped like the attached photos. The troop will also remove the dead bushes, trim back the live ones, and plant some new perennial flowers, bushes, and top it all off with fresh mulch, including a new flagpole. And please see the pictures attached. If you agree, please sign a return so the troop can request the approval be put on the agenda at the next council meeting for consideration. Signed by Chief Chris Johnson, four fifteen, two thousand twenty-four.
Here's a copy for your records.
Don't need it, thank you.
Can we make a resolution for that, Mr. Mayor?
We could.
Oh, I'll make a motion, help do the renovations, free labor, and it's good for the Boy Scouts, great for the town.
Free material as well.
Yeah. Can we then just make that, a request that it be added to the next agenda since we don't have--
Exactly.
That'll be--
Sure.
You're asking that it be added, it'll be added onto the agenda, that way--
And we'll take that under consideration.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, can we get it on the agenda?
Take it under consideration, yeah.
And the mayor doesn't set the agenda.
Do we need a second? Mr. Big Door?
I don't think there's a vote. You're not voting on it tonight to the best of my understanding, you're asking that it be placed on the agenda, so--
Mr. Request.
It's in, it'll be in the minutes.
That's it for old business? I'd like to close old business. Any new, does any member of council have any new business to bring before council?
I have one. Councilwoman Payne, I just wanted to bring this to your attention, I received a letter this week from a resident, I wanted to see if we could dig into this some more, that a resident was being verbally abused by a door knocker with no I. D., no response from permit info, and no business card or name, so if we could just dig into that.
Could you forward it to the chief?
Dear Council liaison, I didn't want to do that without you being aware of it.
This was hand, was this--
It was mailed.
Male to you at Borough?
Yes.
Thank you.
Snail mail. I'd like to close old business, open to the public. The public comment portion of our meeting is to allow the public to bring to the council's attention their concerns or comments. The council will respect the public's time by refraining from any comment until the speaker has finished. It should be further noted that this public comment portion of our meeting is not structured as a question and answer session. Please state your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. Just a reminder, under the rules of council, individuals wishing to speak during the public input part of the meeting shall be limited to five minutes, and may, after other speakers have finished, may be allowed to speak for a second five-minute period.
Debbie Miller, ninety-two Ford Avenue. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the girls softball team for their achievement, congratulate the promotion of the Police Department officers. Also, if anybody is interested, there is a, on YouTube, the New Jersey Pack reel, the meeting is on YouTube, it was about a month ago, I watched it, it's quite informative, and it goes over some of the things that is in the resolution. Then the other thing that I would like to mention is, last week, I noticed that there's some political lawn signs out, and I thought that there was a thirty-day restriction on that, meaning that the sign shouldn't go up any more than thirty days before the election. So I did some research, and I did confirm that that is the case, that the sign should not go up more than thirty days before election, and that's chapter thirty-four in the Code Manual, thirty-three point two-three, E. number nine. Can somebody confirm that, or?
I don't have it in front of me to confirm, I can look into it.
I-- Mr. Vignolo, can you please look into that?
I can look into that, but I know that to the extent that the signs are political speech, political speech is protected, and to the extent that our ordinance predates vote by mail--
Correct.
There's some flexibility that's, I think, been kind of read into it over the last several years to try to not create a situation where you're going to impact someone's free speech rights, you know, for political speech, so.
Then perhaps the code conduct, the manual municipality code should be updated.
Perhaps it should be, so it's really, it's gonna be the council's call on what they want to do with that.
Okay, thank you.
You got it.
Good evening, Russ Einbinder, one fifty-two A. North Main Street, on behalf of the Milltown TV station. First of all, some of you that do cable vision may have noticed that unbeknownst to me and anybody else, they just decide, single-handedly decided to move the station to thirteen-hundred. Well, we have received via some of the people that do get Optimum now that they are changing it back to channel fifteen within the next week, so that'll be changed back for people that need to see it tonight and whatever. And also, not tomorrow, not this week, but next week, the seventeenth, is our annual Candidates Forum, right here in this room, seven o'clock, not seven-thirty, but people can get here, you know, a little before seven to hand in their questions, a lot of fun stuff that we usually do. And pleased to have Professor Richard Lau here again from the Eagleland Institute, being our moderator, lovely gentleman who did for us a few years ago and is stepping up again, and hope to see you here with your questions, and I thank you very much, and see you then.
Lee Weisenberger, ninety-nine JFK Drive. I'd like to touch on a couple of things tonight, but the planning board hasn't been meeting that often, so I was hoping I could address CME tonight a little bit, because the Boree Development, when that started many years ago, they presented drawings to the planning board and so forth. Do you have any idea how many drawings were presented to who?
You referred to Ford Avenue.
Right, redevelopment, because there was, I've seen a few, forty or forty-four pages, but I don't know who got them, if there's a copy around somewhere.
We're happy to look at our file, but I think you may be referring to the plans that were developed by the developer.
Right, but they were presented to the planning board, to the town.
Not prepared by our office, they were presented to the town.
Right, but how many did they present? That's what I'm trying to find out.
It goes back, I think, twenty-five years, I can't even remember that, I've been around a long time, I can't remember that. We'll be happy to look at our files if it turns out the mayor and council wants to, we see what we can find.
Because if they were presented to the board, did CME get a copy, you think, or?
We would probably have a copy, but, you know, twenty-five years of files, it's not really something that, but we can take a look, okay?
Right.
It's a while back.
I'm interested in the first four pages.
Okay, so we'll look, we'll take a look.
And we'll stick with CME right now. We've brought this up before, CME, I believe, started with us nineteen eighty-two or so, plus or minus.
Well, yeah, nineteen eighty-three, I think it was, yeah.
Right, eighty-three. And the bona fide title search, it came out in ninety-seven, CME was there.
We were the Borough's Engineer at that time, that's correct.
Because that title search took two and a half years.
We haven't done the title search, the title search is nothing that we do for you.
No, I'm just saying, but you were well aware of it.
That there was a title search being done?
That it was done, completed, given to the town in ninety-seven.
I don't recall.
Because recently, I opened CME for documentation in two thousand, two thousand and eight concerning any correspondence with the D. E. P. over ownership of the dam. I gave to our previous clerk a copy of file from the D. E. P. I have no clue what happened to it. Now, I have it with tonight again, I have three pages from it, because-- Now, I have it with tonight again, I have three pages from it, because I can read it, probably the simplest way to do this, because this is from Jillian Lawrence. She is with the DEP at that time, principal sub-civil engineer. This email is going to New Brunswick, and it's, "Dear Mr. Terisi and Mr. Loughlin, this email is in reference to Mr. Loughlin's October, October 7th, 2007 letter, and Mr. Terisi's October 15th, 2007 email concerning ownership of the Mill Pond Dam located within the borough of Milltown, Middlesex County. Based upon your correspondence, it is necessary, necessary to provide some clarification in this situation. A review with the borough of Milltown's engineers, CME associates, has revealed a deed which indicates that in 1918, the city of New Brunswick erected a concrete arch dam to increase the supply of water for the inhabitants of the city of New Brunswick. This deed is attached to this email for your reference. The department maintains that an owner and/or operator means any person who owns, controls, operates, maintains, manages, or proposed to construct the dam as per the New Jersey Dam Safety Construct, or Standards, constructed the dam and via the New Brunswick Water Department operates, maintains, or has control of the reservoir dam, and as a result, under the Safe Dam Act, is responsible for the structure. Therefore, the department's September 27, 2000 order still remains in effect. Have any questions, contact Jillian Lawrence." This is because the DEP, after this correspondence, made New Brunswick do a dam inspection on that dam, 2007, Hatch McDonald. I'm confused why we have that title search in 2000, in 1997. Ford Avenue is going at that time, too, because Mr. Bore Ray wants to develop that property, but then early 2000, it turns into Milltown now, getting into the redevelopment of that property. I'm hoping to get an answer tonight, then. Why does CME, why are we contacting New Brunswick about ownership of the dam? It's already been settled in that title search. And since then, this has created a real mess. If somebody can explain this, be happy to hear it.
We have not seen that email that you referred to.
DEP's got the whole file. They got a nice box down there. You can request it from them. Mr. Johnson's name, I gave you two now. He's, he's the gentleman down there now to contact. They'll be happy to send you to all of this stuff. I can give you the top three pages, I won't give you the rest, because I'm tired of copying it. Like I said, what happened to the copy I gave to this, this council a few years back? I don't know what happened to it. I don't know where it went. Because even with the title searches, I told everybody, they're available to anybody. Read them. That was the point at the last meeting to Mr. Vignolo, when we got into the trestle bit, but the, the, the idea there was that the title for the trestle, the pond, the dam, it's all the same deeds. It doesn't change. So, because I, I believe early on, when we talked about that title search for the trestle, that you weren't sure when that first came out, who was owner, which is possible, because there's a lot of leans on a lot of things, but once again, nothing has changed hands. But this, that date now, 2007, that corresponds to some other things, and I just want to know why, why CME did this? Why would you send a deed, which is the wrong deed, to the DEP, and this has created that disputed ownership? I believe that's where this has started. And as I said, this has turned into a real serious issue, because we are now on the hook. I've been told now, for the insurance on this and everything, it's all flipped to us because of what's going on in that tax assessor's office, and we have to have this changed. So, that's it. Appreciate the time.
Lee, can I have copies of those three things, please?
I'll give them, I can give them to Gretchen, she wants to make copies of the first three.
Thank you.
Here's it. We've got the file number, please. 811 in here.
Nick Legati, 9 Janet Court. Please excuse my appearance, I wasn't planning on coming down here tonight. I was watching the meeting, and I just wanted to address one issue that is a sticking issue for me, and it is the existing old firehouses. To insinuate that it's not a big issue, if only a few residents have questioned what's being done with that, is a extremely sad excuse. Every vote counts in this town, every resident counts in this town, whether it's one or 1,000, it should be addressed. Now, Gretchen, how many tax-paying households are in Milltown, roughly?
3,500 homes, plus or minus?
3,500 homes. I would assume, with, with fairly good percentage, 3,500 residents or 3,500 households care about what was supposed to happen to those two firehouses, which was promised to be sold to recoup some of the cost. Now, I know that, because I sat up there where you all are sitting and made decisions based on that. Now, the mayor was generous when he said the South Main Street rehabilitation, whatever, was two years ago. He was generous. It was four years ago, and nothing has been done. Nothing. Now, I understand the makeup of politics and who's doing what, or whatever the case may be, but you all are better than that. This is for the betterment of Milltown, of its residents, and you all are stopping some progress to get relief from res, for residents, because of some reason that I am unaware of. But I am telling all of you, I made decisions based on they would be sold to recoup cost for the new, uh...
DPW.
DPW and firehouse. Okay, now, I came here tonight because it was insinuated that it was only a few residents. It's not a few residents. It, what was, was promised to all the households of, of Milltown. Now, take that for what you want, get off your keisters and do something about it, get something going. I've been up here several times, asking what's going to be done, over the last, I don't know, three, four years. When I left council six years ago, I wrote an email to every oncoming council member to not let this fall through the cracks, and it's exactly what happened. One of you, two of you, three of you, four of you, all of you, take this under your wing. The mayor is trying, work together to do what's best for Milltown. Thank you for your time, have a good night.
Now, Mr. Legati, I actually had a few residents reach out to me that either wanted to renovate and purchase the property, renovate and lease the property, or purchase the property and turn it into a microbrewery. That was not just one, it was more than one resident had offered that, and it has gone nowhere, and that's, that's part of recouping some of the money for the establishing establishments of Milltown that is so frustrating.
I, I understand. You all need the options of what's supposed to happen. You tried that South Street, Main Street rehabilitation thing, was four years ago. Nothing happened.
Correct.
Okay? If nothing happened, take the bull by the horn and do what you're supposed to do, do what was promised to the residents of Milltown. I, I'm sorry, but I understand, it's not a question and answer, I'm not looking for questions and answers, I'm not looking for you to comment, I'm giving you information that you have sat on for years.
And that's why I reached out to Mr. Vignolo in February of 25?
And just to verify for you all, I speak to a lot of people in town, okay? It's not one, it's not two, it's not five, it's hundreds of people that I speak with that want to know what's going on with those two firehouses. Just for me, it's hundreds. Just for common sense, it's every voting household, 3,500, that should care and do care, because it would give them some relief. Thank you again.
I'm going to say for Mr. Legati, I, I think, for the record, I'd like to get evaluation on both of those buildings, the two firehouses, if we can have that, for the record.
It was done seven years ago.
If we can get a current one.
Councilman Posnansky, that's why I requested the subcommittee be formed to make a good determination of what we should do, market value, what's the best options for doing all that back in February.
But I got to say, Mr. Mayor, the price appreciation of the properties has been greatly appreciated in the last six years or so.
Missed out on three real estate homes. Three real estate homes are ready.
I, I think the town will do better than it would have six years ago if we disposed them.
Absolutely, I wholeheartedly agree. Seeing no more audience comments, I'd like to close audience comments. I'd like to see if the clerk can read Resolution 2025-308, please.
Resolution 2025-308, entering executive session.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion made by Councilman Potter, second by Councilman Collins. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Dan Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manko.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
We can say it here.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to, if everyone could please step out while we have executive session. Thank you.